Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I see we have the Boy Scout troop with us today. Boys, would you lead us in the pledge? Would you start us off, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at their minutes from 10/17/17? There's no corrections or comments? Motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the minutes of the Common Council meeting of October 17th, 2017.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Stain.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item number four is a resolution, a rather sad one, wishing condolences upon the death of Robert R. Hauske. He was one of Oak Creek's very own. We lost a member of our family recently. And we'll have the city clerk read the resolution into the record.
Resolution number 11881-110717. Resolution of condolence upon the death of Robert R. Hauske, whereas the city of Oak Creek received the sad news that Robert R. Hauske passed away to eternal life on October 29th, 2017, and whereas on June 12th, 2017, Robert R. Hauske was hired as a seasonal laborer for the city of Oak Creek Parks, Streets, and Forestry Department. And whereas during his employment with the city of Oak Creek, Robert R. Hauske served the city of Oak Creek with dedication and loyalty. And whereas Robert's compassion and willingness to lend a hand led him to recently enroll at Milwaukee Area Technical College in the EMT firefighter program. And whereas Robert R. Hauske was a devoted son to Ron and Lori and a brother and best friend to Jennifer and will be greatly missed by his family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the citizens of the city of Oak Creek and the mayor and the common council of this city, to express our deepest sorrow on the death of Robert R. Hauske and extend sincere and heartfelt sympathy to his family. We it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and a suitable copy therefore of be forwarded to the family of the late Robert R. Hauske, introduced at a regular meeting of the common council of the city of Oak Creek held the 7th date of November, 2017.
Thank you, Catherine. And again, I'd like to express on behalf of the entire council, myself, and the city, our pure sincere condolences on your loss. I ask all God's blessings that he takes care of you and looks after you in your time of need. We do have a resolution. Just walk this down to you. If anybody has anything to say or add, please feel free. Or I do. Thank you. We need a motion on a resolution.
Yeah, I'll move to approve Resolution 11881-110717, Resolution of condolence upon the death of Robert R. Hauske.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, public hearings. Item number five, it's to consider a conditional, consider a request by Asfaw Singh Dewal, JT Petroleum LLC, for a conditional use permit allowing a gasoline station with a convenience store and two underground fuel tanks at the property at 9502 South Howell Avenue.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request by Jaspol Singh Dewali, JT Petroleum LLC, for a conditional use permit allowing a gasoline service station with convenience store and two underground fuel tanks on the property at 9502 South Howell Avenue. The applicant is Jaspol Singh Dollywall, JT Petroleum LLC. Property owner is JT Petroleum LLC. Therefore, as the legal description, date of the notice is September 27th, 2017.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the city. And this is a public hearing on a request for a conditional use permit for a gasoline service station and convenience store on the property at 9502 South Howell Avenue. JT Petroleum LLC is requesting this conditional use permit to reopen and reestablish the service station and convenience store at the corner of Howell and Ryan, which includes two underground fuel tanks. Gasoline stations are conditional uses in the B4 Highway Business Zoning District. And even though this use, obviously this corner had been used as a gas station in the past, given the lapse of time between when it had operated as a legal nonconforming use and the plan to reopen it, an additional conditional use permit was required for that. So the proposal is to renovate and utilize the existing roughly 1,500 square foot building for the convenience store and utilize, to the extent possible, the existing structures, but to bring the, obviously the station up to the city's standards with respect to signage, lighting, and where possible landscaping. The Plan Commission has reviewed the proposed conditional use permit. They have recommended their approval, subject to a set of conditions and restrictions that the council has before them this evening. So with that, I would note that this is a public hearing. Anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal for a conditional use permit for a gasoline service station and convenience store on the property at 9502 South Howell Avenue, please fill out an appearance form when your name is called by the city clerk. Please approach the podium and proceed to address your questions and or comments. The common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Mr. Seymour said, it is a public hearing. I will make three calls. This will be the first call.
Arden Digney, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I feel the need for pumps to allow air in the tires, and I don't see any provision in this plot to help out motorists that need air as well as bicyclists.
Thank you.
Like to see it added.
I will now make the second call. Third and final call. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and move on to consideration of ordinance 2875 approving the conditional use permit for the gasoline service station with convenience store on the property at 9502 South Howell. Open it up to the council. Questions? Comments? Steve.
Doug, I'm sure Alderman Gale has received a lot of calls about this place, and coincidentally so have I up in the First District about doing something with this corner because three of the four corners look very nice, and now we have somebody here who's gonna do something with it. The applicant may be the one to answer these questions, but with regards to the recent ordinance change we had with regards to lighting and such, which was predicated upon all the sudden influx of the bright LED lights that surround business windows, how would that ordinance affect a gas station with all the lighting that it already has? Because, well, I'll save my comment until I hear what you have to say.
Yeah, I guess the quick answer to that is the use is being reestablished, but the it will also be subject to the current cogent regulations with respect to lighting, and certainly the recent changes to the LED ordinance will apply to this gas station.
Okay. I'm on record as totally opposing those type of lights anywhere in the city. I think they look terrible, and now we've had another business in my district pop up with these bright lights, and they just look terrible. That would be the Indian Restaurant on Drexel and that strip mall around on the corner. Used to be a Chinese restaurant, but now it's Indian Foods. And so I'm hopeful the applicant does not put bright LED lights in your windows because they look terrible. But I want to compliment you, sir, for taking on the project because you make it look really nice. Those four corners will look really nice. So, thank you.
Ken.
Thanks, Mayor. This is in my district, that's a table on the agenda. But I, as Alderman Kurkowski did allude to, I have obviously received a boatload of calls on this particular property as it's obviously fallen in quite disrepair over the past couple of years, given its tenuous operation for years before that. So we're hoping and trusting that the new operator can establish a viable presence there and maintain the property in a manner that's going to go along with the neighborhood and the significant amount of investment that Aurora's put in across the street and hopefully be a decent neighbor. So we appreciate the commitment to that corner, and we're looking forward to a viable and sustainable business operation there.
Greg.
Thank you. Just clarification on the proposed hours of 24/7. Is that for the convenience store? Is that for 24-hour pay at the pump, or does it distinguish between the two at all?
It does not distinguish between the two, but I think that would be an appropriate question for the applicant.
Name and address, please.
My name is Jaspol Dollywall. My address is 12929 North Powatosa Road in McQuone, Wisconsin. Currently, I mean, the store's closed. We don't know what...
Sir, can you...
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
The store is currently closed, and we don't know what the business is gonna do. I mean, if we don't have the business to sustain a 24-hour operation, we'd obviously be closing in the evening and maintain the pumps, pay the pump for 24-hour. And again, it's at the council's discretion as to what hours you'll allow us to post, but initially, we'd like to try and have a 24-hour operation.
Thank you. I would suggest if you are gonna attempt the 24 hours that you consult with our police department.
Absolutely.
Find out their suggestions, needs, security, things of that nature.
Sure.
And as long as you're up, can you address the air pump? Is there gonna be a manual air pump?
Most of my locations do have air pumps there, so I don't think it... We will have something available. And I agree with you with the LED lights in the windows look very tacky, and I have no interest in putting those up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything for the applicant?
Ken, let's just clarify with Doug or whoever on the hours of operation. Are the gas stations typically allowed to operate 24 hours a day, or is what do we do in the... I know QuickTrip does the 24-hour operation.
Yeah, I mean, we do typically allow them unless there's a reason to...
Have not heard any residents complain?
Neighborhood impact, that we would not allow that. And I don't know that that's the case here.
Is that something, is it in here, Doug? I didn't notice it quickly.
It's in the staff report, in the narrative of the staff report. There's nothing about hours of operations in the conditional use permit. If you'd feel comfortable adding that in, we can certainly do that.
How does that work with a CSM, Doug? If you wanted to... We wanted to change it, we'd have to... How would that work?
Yeah, I mean, you could insert that into the Section 3 about site and use restrictions.
Sir, and that's your original intent, is operate 24 hours a day?
I would like to, I mean, at least have the opportunity to. I mean, again, if the business does not justify it, then we would reduce our hours to, you know, whatever would be suitable.
Ken?
Yeah.
Anything? Chris?
Oh, most of this was hashed over pretty well at the Plan Commission's.
Did that come up at the...
Not the hours of operation. I don't recall.
No, the hours of operations did not come up. You know, we talked more about the aesthetics. The canopies are being redone and the building itself. We're more worried about the aesthetics of the corner. No, we did not touch on it.
Officially, and it will be a BP, right?
Correct. BP has approved it. We, my sign guys actually been talking with the city already to work within the parameters that you guys have set forth, and we should have something for you soon to go ahead with that.
Are you covering the building in their colors, or is the building gonna stay brick?
The building will stay brick.
And you think the 24-hour operation on that corner will matter to the resident?
You know, I don't really think it will have a negative impact. You know, I live back there, pretty close to that, and there's a pretty good buffer between the residential subdivision to the, you know, south and east. I don't see an issue offhand. Ken?
Okay. So we're gonna officially write that into the CSM?
That's the pleasure of the council.
24 hours? To allow him?
Allow him.
I would, I think I would give him the discretion and opportunity to.
Right.
Okay. Seeing no more. Input or conversation? Motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve ordinance 2875 to approve a conditional use permit for a gasoline service station with a convenience store on the property at 9502 South Howell Avenue with the amendment for hours of operation as discussed.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven, conditional use, request by Meredith Hall of Old Forest Studio for a conditional use permit for a licensed tattoo or body piercing studio. Catherine?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by Meredith Hall, Old Forest Studio LLC, for a conditional use permit allowing a licensed tattoo and/or body piercing studio on the property of 8660 South Marketplace. Applicant is Meredith Hall, Old Forest Studio LLC. Property owner is GVP Properties LLC. Therefore, as the legal description, date of notice is September 27th, 2017.
Thank you. Pretty straightforward. Meredith Hall is requesting the conditional use that will allow a licensed tattoo and body piercing studio on the property within the Marketplace condominium development. Licensed tattoo and body piercing studios are considered conditional uses in the B2 Community Business Zoning District. There is some narrative in your packet with respect to the operational plan for that. We also have a sketch of the layout of the unit within the Marketplace condominiums. The Plan Commission has reviewed the proposed conditional use permit, and they have recommended their approval, subject to the attached conditions and restrictions. Again, this being any public hearing, anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit should please fill out an appearance form. When your name is called, please proceed at the podium to address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Great, thank you, Doug. We will make three calls. This will be the first call. Second call. Anyone wishing to speak? Second call. Third and final call. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, move on to item nine, item eight. Consideration of the ordinance 2876 to approve that conditional use permit. We'll open it up for questions or comments from the council. Seeing none? Motion?
Toman will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2876 to approve a conditional use permit for one licensed tattoo and/or body piercing studio on the property at 8660 South Marketplace.
Yeah, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item nine, conditional use, consider a request by Olympic Real Estate Holdings for conditional use for a freight yard terminal transshipping depot on the property at 104 10450 South Parkview. Catherine?
Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Olympic Real Estate Holdings LLC for a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot uses on the property at 10450 South Oakview Parkway. Applicant is Olympic Real Estate Holdings LLC. Property owner, K&amp;Z Partners LLC. Therefore, as the legal description, date of notice is October 11th, 2017.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening once again. Olympic Real Estate Holdings is requesting this conditional use approval for a freight yard and freight terminal or transshipment depot on the property at 10450 South Oakview Parkway in the Oakview Business Park. The site plan is projected on the screen before this evening. It is an existing spec building that was constructed. The fact that one of the possible tenants is Pilot Air Freight, they've signed a lease for about $44,000, $45,000 square feet in the building, and given that their sole business is in that kind of freight transshipment, a conditional use permit is required. And that's just maybe a note because it might be a little confusing. I mean, we do allow, obviously, trucks and stores and distribution as part of, as an accessory used to something that would be manufactured in the building per se. But since their use is exclusively for that, and they're not actually manufacturing a product there, that's why that conditional use permit does kick in. So with that in mind, and the Plan Commission has reviewed the proposed conditional use request, and they have recommended approval of the CUP with the attached conditions and restrictions, this being a public hearing, again, anyone with any questions, comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for the property at 10450 South Oakview Parkway, please, once again, fill out an appearance form, and when your name is called, please address the podium with your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Great, thank you, Doug. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to item 10, which is consideration of the ordinance of that public hearing. Open it up for questions or comments from the council. Owen?
Ken, I didn't have any feedback from the district there.
No input at all. Okay. Rich?
Mayor, just, I guess, to kind of bring me up to speed and educate me a bit on some of these issues, isn't this nearby where the proposed FedEx terminal is going to be?
It's just to the south. Just to the south in Oakview Business Park.
So, within a half mile?
Oh, definitely.
And I just recall the significant public feedback that there was at that time, given the traffic concerns with that FedEx terminal. So, Ken, you're saying you didn't, you haven't heard of anything from your constituents, or there's no concern on behalf of the city with the amount of traffic, additional traffic that would be generated?
Alderman, when the, when the Oakview Business Park was established by the city and its partners, there was a traffic impact analysis that was performed, which essentially predicted and assigned traffic that would be generated from the businesses within this development. And certainly, when you look at a business park, there's some level of expectation that there will be trucking, whether it's from a company that's doing manufacturing there or from companies that are doing distribution. So the fact that there's additional trucks there really is something that has been accounted for as part of the DIA.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, there was a significant amount of money spent on behalf of the Oakview Business Park to actually improve the intersections along the way. You know, the FedEx thing was incremental on top of that, so that's why that was a controversial, you know, amount of incremental traffic.
Howell Avenue, though, would continue to be their main access point, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you can't go west in Oakview with semi-trailers legally.
Anything else?
Legally, yeah.
Seeing none? Motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve ordinance 2877 to approve a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot uses on the property at 10450 South Oakview Parkway.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Next, we have consideration of an amendment to a conditional use permit to allow outdoor storage at our proposed newest venture on 6300 South 27th Street. Catherine?
Public hearing number four is to consider a request submitted by Chris Nutini, QuickTrip, for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow outdoor storage and display of retail ice and propane merchandise on the property at 6300 South 27th Street. Applicant is Chris Nutini. Property owner is Roman and Susan Lee Andauski, Generation Skipping Trust, FBO, Lorna Henderson and Crystal Sue Abalter, care of Lorna Henderson. Therefore, as the legal description, date of notice is October 11th, 2017.
Thank you. The final public hearing this evening is for a request for outdoor storage of merchandise and display of ice and propane for the newest QuickTrip in the community, which is the former PDQ store at the corner of 27th Street and College. For those of you who don't know, QuickTrip has acquired the assets of PDQ in southeast Wisconsin and, I guess, in the entire state, and they are converting this store in Oak Creek to a QuickTrip. As is consistent with the remainder of not only the QuickTrip stores, but many of the newer gas stations in the city, we have allowed a minimal amount of outdoor display, provided that it's limited to, again, ice and propane and not necessarily other things like mulch or washer fluid or things of that nature. So it really establishes what can and cannot be displayed outside of the building, very much consistent with certainly the other QuickTrips in the community, and in fact, is consistent with the, I believe, the gas station that you just approved this evening as well. So, again, this being a public hearing, anyone who has any questions or comments regarding this proposed conditional use permit, please fill an appearance form. When you're called, please approach the podium and address your comments and or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug stated, we'll make three calls. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing. Hearing, hearing nobody wishing to speak, and we will move on to consideration of the ordinance to accept that outdoor storage and display. Now, open it up to the council for questions, comments.
Mayor, my only comment would be that, you know, the council taken into consideration anything that they can possibly do to help that business owner. For many of you that are familiar with that intersection, the previous property owner underwent some challenges with that intersection being under construction for probably two to three years and with a changing plan, I think, two or three times. So we wish QuickTrip, or Quick, QuickTrip, success with that corner, and again, you know, consider their request.
Not anyone else? No, it's pretty straightforward. This is pretty standard stuff for what we do at service stations across the city, so nothing special here. Move on for motion.
Our call moved that the council adopt ordinance 2878, an ordinance to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2331, to allow outdoor storage and display of ice and propane retail merchandise on the property at 6300 South 27th Street.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Moving on, new business, informational treasurer's report tonight. We have with us Barb.
Good evening. My standard monthly report, treasurer's report. I do have one correction on my council report. I had to typo. The report that's attached is correct, but on the ending balance, the totals, I have $37 million. It should be $32 million. Sorry.
It's $5 million.
Yeah, it's $5 million. Any questions?
Is that just the ending balance?
Just the ending balance, correct. Like I said, the report that's attached is correct. I just typed it wrong in here.
Comments? Lot to take in, I know.
Barb, just a quick question. From your experience, and maybe Bridger, you can chime in too, how fast does the LGIP react to short-term interest rate moves that the Fed has? Do you feel for that?
They're generally lagging. I guess I don't really know how far behind the air, but...
Slowly?
Slowly.
Okay.
And that's being conservative.
All right.
Anyone else? Anyone else? No? Thank you Barb, very nice. Moving on, item 14, ordinance 2873, confirming the adoption of a settlement agreement between the city and the Labor Association of Wisconsin Inc. for fixing the salaries for the association from September 1, 2017 through September 1, 2018. Andrew, are you taking it up?
Good evening. We have before you the Labor Association of Wisconsin Union Contract or Settlement Agreement for September 1, 2017 to September 1, 2018. And that covers a lot of the employees in the streets department, some of our clerical employees, as well as some of our engineering employees, and that would be adjusting their wages by 1.5% with a total, for 46 employees, a total of $39,451.
Andrew?
Yes, I can chime in. Thank you, Mayor. This is, you know, this is as good as can be hoped for by this group and the personnel committee, to be honest, as this group is capped per the provisions of Act 10 and other legislation since this group is capped at the CPI as determined by the state. The CPI as of contracts beginning September 1 is 1.5%. That has actually crept up over 2% for contracts beginning in, I think, February, the February-March timeframe. So we are beholden to that determination of CPI by the state. So I know the group is feeling good about it. This has been a few years where, given the limitations of the CPI, the group hasn't felt as though they, you know, did as well as they could have. But we were all constrained in that bucket. But it was a very positive and productive meeting with the law group, and, you know, they were happy to see the city move towards the cap of the CPI again, with a little better cap this year than they're used to. So I think all, everybody, both parties, really came away from the table pretty happy with the outcome.
Anyone else? I, myself, am glad to see that they got a little higher than normal in past years. The CPI did creep up for them. It's a very hard-working group, very dedicated individuals that keep our city moving. So I'm glad to see that it was a little higher than normal for them. Seeing nothing else? Motion?
Oracle move that the council adopt ordinance number 2873, confirming adoption of the settlement agreement between the city of Oak Creek and the Labor Association of Wisconsin, Inc., and fixing the salary for members of the association from September 1, 2017 through September 1, 2018.
Guzekowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Item 15 is consideration of ordinance number 2879, an ordinance fixing the salary and certain allowances for elected city clerk, city treasurer offices for a three-year term from May 1, 2018 to April 30, 2021.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take this one. On behalf of discussions I've been having with the elected city clerk and the elected city treasurer, I put forth the following salary recommendation for the next term. I know the council is aware that we're, you know, having some discussions for the future on formalizing these positions a little more, cementing them further into the city organization. And I think there's an appropriate time for that discussion, but we don't have the luxury of time on the salary discussion. So each year, each year prior to the next elected term, prior to December 1, we have to set the salary for these positions, and that's what we're doing tonight. I think the salary proposal is, you know, fair, appropriate, given that the positions haven't been increased since 2012. And I'd like the council to consider the recommendation in the staff report.
Questions, comments? Seeing none? Motion?
Gail will move to approve ordinance 2879, an ordinance fixing the salary and certain allowances for elected city clerk and city treasurer offices for the three-year term beginning May 1, 2018 through April 30, 2021.
Dukenyak second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Item 16, consideration of ordinance number 2874, creating section 2.79 of the municipal code to establish a board of absentee canvassers, canvases, canvassers.
With words. Okay, so I guess I'll explain. We've been through this two times. What happens is for the larger election years, which are the even years, 2014, 2016, coming up to 2018, we have a very high volume of early voting or early absentee voting. And we made a lot of efforts in streamlining that process, knowing that that will only increase in the future. So we have established a central count here within the city of Oak Creek where we process all of our early absentee ballots here on Election Day, and that enables us to establish this board of absentee ballot canvassers. Much like a polling location, these employees are, seasonal employees are hired to come in here and process on that day. So what the election commission asks that you do is that you establish the board of canvassers for an entire election cycle. So in the even years, we would need to establish this board to process for those really heavy election years, presidential and governor. In the odd years, our numbers aren't that high where the ballots go out to the districts to process on Election Day. So essentially, this is a little housekeeping so that in 2018, during the governor race, we'll be able to enact our absentee ballot canvassers on Election Day here at City Hall.
Thank you Catherine. Questions, comments from the council? Okay, seeing none? Motion?
Gail will move to approve ordinance 2874, creating section 2.79 of the municipal code to establish a board of absentee canvassers.
Dukenyak second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
17 is to consider a motion to approve the appointment of elected officials for a two-year period of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2019.
This is asking that the common council approves my selection of election officials, our poll workers in the city. We are to do that by December 31 in the odd years. Part of this process is that we are asked to consider any election officials suggested to us from the political parties, the major political parties, and I have received none for this year from those parties. So it really, there's no other requirements other than the training that's required from these poll workers. So here's my list. Just a note that with the large election coming up in November of next year for the governor race, I will be soliciting for more election inspectors and will be training them throughout the year. Should there be additional ones, I could bring them to as well for approval.
Thank you.
Mayor, sorry.
Yes?
Catherine, I did notice it before, but Tom and Josie Nitter no longer live at that residence, so...
So I'll throw this out there. So I try to retain election officials as long as I can and as long as they're willing. On occasion, many of these that we have listed here are very, once in a while. So they'll work the larger elections and not every election. And I hope that I can rely on them to come back and then receive the training and work those elections. So there may be a few people on here that don't work every election. So like the Nitters, I know you're right, they went down to Florida and then came back. So we'll get that address updated.
Any other comments, questions? Before we make the motion, I'd just like to thank everybody that steps up to do this is a vital part of our elective process and hats off to those that step forward because it is a long day. I see we do have someone out there that does work our election polls. And again, thank you not only to you, but everybody else. Seeing no other questions, comments? Motion?
Gail will move to approve the appointment of election officials for the two-year period of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2019.
Dukenyak second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item 18 is a discussion, it's council discussion and direction to the city staff regarding the scheduling of 2018 regular combined common council meeting dates, something we always take up this time of year. So if you had a chance to take a look, I believe the clerk inserted a calendar there as to what we're suggesting.
Yeah, and I saw you did add the potential discussion on vacating the early January meeting.
Yes.
Be interesting to see if the staff, if that's an imperative meeting to have or how they feel about that. I'm not sure.
I mean, the input really fell. I mean, we're talking about January 3, correct?
I'm not sure if there's stuff we have to do that day or not.
How much fun are you planning on having on New Year's Eve, Ken?
You know, if you consider how Christmas falls this year and the amount of real business that's going on in the two weeks prior, there's probably the best guest scenario from the clerk's offices. There probably wasn't going to be a lot of action going on at January 3 date. And then it is an off day. It turns out to be a Wednesday.
I just be wondering if Doug, if there's a timing on any public hearings or anything that are coming into play here.
Not to my knowledge. I mean, we were certainly, with the knowledge of that, I don't believe we had anything scheduled for that date at this point. We just schedule around that.
Just one thing, if I may, Mayor. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Clerk Reski, but we do not have a second meeting in December.
The proposal, right, is to vacate. Well, right, we wouldn't have the second one in December and then what's on the...
This month, or this year, excuse me. So we do have a pretty, just for your consideration, we do have a pretty long gap then.
Six weeks.
But you could slide that to 9 and 23 in January.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's planned.
Are we ready to get rid of the 18th, Andrew?
19th?
Oh, no. Oh, that's right.
This year, we do have a 20, the meeting on the 26th of December. Yeah, so, and some of the discussion that we had in coming up with this information was that a lot of people are off on vacation and the council reports and the work kind of being processed is a little bit slower. That's why the suggestion was for that 3rd.
If we have a meeting this coming December 19th.
We have one.
Then we should be fine.
We have one the 19th.
We should be fine then.
We will just have to approve another resolution to be able to pay bills similar to what we do in July.
December 5 and December 19.
That was the reasoning on vacating the 3rd. Any objections? No? I'm in Disney, so it's okay with me not to have a meeting.
Just to clarify, instruction from council would be both January 3 and July 3 would be vacated meetings, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're in agreement? And all the other days? Yeah. It would be that easy. It should be that easy. Any other questions before we make a formal motion? Bridget?
I don't see orange on my calendar. Budget hearing dates, it's just not there.
I've not gotten that far ahead, but I can estimate that it would be November 19.
Why do you do that?
I don't do that. The state sets those dates.
I'm sorry, Bridget. What's November 19?
Alderman Kirkowski asked when the budget hearing would be next year.
Oh, it's that Monday.
Yes, it's the third Monday in the month of November.
Yeah, you know, you're rocking.
I know. Remember, it's the 20th this year. This year is the 20th.
Thank you.
That's hunting week, right?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
Lucy has issues too.
If I have to bake you bread, I'll make bread. Just please go.
So, any further discussion? Because this will come up on next month's agenda.
Mayor, no meeting on January 3 or July 3?
There you go. Okay. You okay?
Yep.
All right, let's move on to 19. Consideration of resolution number 11873-110717, designating official holidays for the 28, for 2018. Pretty standard stuff. Everything's in there but the dreaded Halloween day that we gotta make a decision on later in the year.
I have a suggestion for Halloween, but we'll talk about it later. I'm kidding. That's a joke.
No, no, we can't go there.
Fourth Saturday in July.
If, no further discussion, motion on 19.
Gail will move to approve resolution 11873-110717, designated official holidays for 2018.
Guzekowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
We have a request by the city attorney to hold, not hold 20, but to move 20 after item number 27. So we'll take it there. I think we'll be able to clarify some questions. That brings us to engineering. That's consideration of a resolution 11863-110717, approving the FedEx development agreement for the design and installation of the public improvements at 500 West Opus Drive. Who's got this one? Doug? No. Mike, engineering. Oh, wow.
This agreement is for the public improvements that are required for the FedEx development to move forward. And it outlines the responsibility of the owner to design and install these improvements and the inspection effort that is required by the city. Basically, it takes care of, or it addresses some sanders where work that needs to happen out there. There's some sanders where it needs to be relocated, extension of water main to complete a loop back to Oakwood Road from Opus Drive, traffic signals at the intersection of Opus and Oakwood, and some fairly substantial roadwork on Opus Drive itself. The road is currently an asphalt road, will be, receive major modifications, not a full reconstruction, but major modifications to get it to concrete for the major stretch from Oakwood north to where it turns westward to the FedEx driveway. West of there, the road will remain asphalt, will be patched and receive its surface of asphalt. Yes, the traffic signals at the intersection.
Any questions for Mike? Seeing none? Motion?
Gail will move to approve resolution 11863-110717, approving the FedEx development agreement for the design and installation of public improvements at 500 West Opus Drive.
Dukenyak second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
22 is consideration of resolution number 11876-110717, approving the stormwater management practice maintenance agreement with Seltzer Properties MKE LLC for the FedEx Freight Terminal located at 500 West Opus. Mike?
Excuse me, this is the typical stormwater maintenance agreement that you see with all developments here in the city. The FedEx development will have a major retention pond as part of their stormwater management, and this agreement just assures that they will do the maintenance and basically just acknowledging that that is their responsibility.
Questions? Questions, comments? Seeing none, motion.
Gale, move to approve resolution one-one-eight-seven-six-dash-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Seltzer Properties MKE LLC for the FedEx Freight Terminal located at five hundred West Opus Drive.
Kirkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Twenty-three, consideration of resolution number one-one-eight-seven-four-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, a resolution to establish stormwater management service charges for the city of Oak Creek.
During the budget workshop, the council may remember that we reviewed the stormwater long-range plan and the rate analysis for the 2018 budget. So this is that time period where if we are increasing the fee, we have to do it via resolution now for it to go on the tax roll. So during the budget workshop, we spoke about having a one dollar and fifty cent increase in that annual fee and then starting a capital equipment reserve in 2019. Based on conversation with the council at that workshop, we instead increased that to a two dollar fee increase so that we could begin that equipment reserve in 2018. So we are proposing in the resolution to increase the stormwater charge from thirty-three dollars to thirty-five dollars on the upcoming tax roll, and that is thirty-five dollars for the entire year for one household.
Questions, comments? Please, Proch. You want to say something, Martin? Come on up.
Erden Degner, eighty-five forty South Pennsylvania Avenue. This increasing of fees, particularly what it's mentioned because of increased development. In the past, all these development costs were part of the plan that was presented by the developer. Why is it that we old established homeowners are forced to pay for the additional cost for the development? It would seem to me that this could be rolled into those kind of fees like we have, other impact fees, rather than increasing these fees to take care of the development and who knows what else. I object to this increase. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Just to be clear, Bridget?
Just to clarify on this, the fee increase is not a result of the new development. As the council will remember, we had a four dollar increase last year where we were funding a street sweeper. We are funding a second street sweeper in 2018, and by increasing the fee, we are acting prudently by creating a capital equipment reserve so that we are not in the type of situation that we are right now where we need to fund a large piece of equipment and needing to increase the fee to be able to pay for that.
Thank you, Bridget. That was a very clear explanation. And yes, it is the very prudent thing to do, to start that sinking fund to pay for future equipment. And just to be clear, this equipment's not used on just new development. It is used citywide, and it's just replacement costs going forward. We will continue to have that whether it's this year or ten years from now. Equipment just plain and simply runs out, so we're doing the prudent thing by having the money ahead of time so we do not have to raise fees in the future when it buys less. Mike?
I'd also like to add that this is, yes, yes, it is related to development, but it is not necessarily related to development of commercial parcels. We have been creating new parks, new parks and open spaces that are enjoyed by all of Oak Creek's citizens and history. And I'm referring to Lake Vista Park where we have bio-retention swales. These are going to take more care and just greater resources. Same things with Emerald Preserve Park and some of the other bio-retention swales that we have throughout Drexel Town Square and in other areas. I mean, this is, this is kind of where, you know, stormwater management is going. You're going to see more of these facilities and features, but they're functional and yet they, they also are aesthetically pleasing and, you know, so it's kind of a quality of life thing, you know, that is not just developers, but, you know, enjoyed by all in the city, so.
Great. Thank you for that input. That's very informative. Ken?
Mike, so you can just clarify, I think, for folks that it appears as though the fee increase is paying for the street sweepers. We have significant costs to stormwater management practices throughout the city that this fee covers. And our fee remains relatively, versus our peers, actually reasonably low from my recollection.
Correct.
And the staff report shows that the thirty-five dollar fee will generate approximately eight-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I mean, that's total. The two dollar increment is but an additional twenty-five, thirty thousand, maybe even less. Give or take.
It's probably closer to fifty, but yes, just under.
Anyone else?
I think I just want to respond to Mr. Degner's comments. Make sure I understand this correctly, that we, we may have increased development here in the city and it isn't necessarily all paid for by the city. I mean, developers may, may pay for part of it, but it's my understanding that once a city, once a street that's developed becomes a responsibility of the city, then we have to maintain that street and part of that is the stormwater management stuff. So we benefit from the increased development, but we have to pay for the upkeep of that stuff. So, as a side note, I have seen that new street sweeper come through my subdivision and my first thought was, wow, there's that quarter million dollar street sweeper going by. So it was a nice job. So thank you, Ted. Thank you.
Anyone else? Chris?
Why your subdivision is here, First District or what?
We have a lot of trees, so we have a lot of crud in our...
Ted?
Ouch.
Well, you know, they go numerical order. Yeah, one, then six. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Seeing no other discussion, motion?
Gale, move to approve resolution one-one-eight-seven-four-dash-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, a resolution to establish stormwater management service charges for the city of Oak Creek.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item twenty-four, consideration of resolution number one-one-eight-seven-five-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, approving the transfer of a twelve-foot wide strip of land along the property at the frontage at seventy-five hundred South Thirteenth Street, approximately zero-point-four-oh acres to Milwaukee County. Additional right-of-way and granting temporary limited easement consisting of an adjacent twenty-five-foot wide strip, approximately zero-point-seven-nine acres for the county's fair market value offer of five hundred dollars. Mike?
So the Milwaukee County design of Thirteenth Street moves along. They are very close than to putting the project out to bid. The design requires that they acquire some right-of-way from some of the adjacent properties due to some widening on the project, there's sidewalks that are going in and grading and side-sloping. So basically, this is a city-owned parcel at seventy-five hundred South Thirteenth Street. It's a vacant property that's just north of Pine Creek Court, I believe is the name of that, that little cul-de-sac. And it is undevelopable. It's just a, it does contain a major drainage swell. And the county is, they're in need of a twelve-foot wide strip of land to get that to the correct width of right-of-way. And they're asking also for at least a temporary use, a temporary limited easement of an additional twenty-five feet east of that, beyond that, so that they can do their grading for the project. The temporary limited easement, of course, is only enforced for the duration of the construction, and then that goes away. The right-of-way remains. And engineering reviewed the appraisal. City assessor did as well and has indicated that he finds things to be in order. The compensation would be four hundred dollars for the right-of-way acquisition and then one hundred dollars for the temporary use, the temporary limited easement. So the recommendation from staff is that the city accept this proposal and sign the warranty deed and complete the transaction.
Questions, comments? Motion?
Kirkowski, make a motion that the council adopt resolution number one-one-eight-seven-five-dash-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, a resolution approving the transfer of a twelve-foot wide strip of land along the property frontage at seventy-five hundred South Thirteenth Street, zero-point-zero-four-zero acres to Milwaukee County as additional right-of-way and granting a temporary limited easement consisting of an adjacent twenty-five-foot wide strip, zero-point-zero-seven-nine acres for the county's fair market value offer of five hundred dollars. Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman. Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item twenty-five, consideration of resolution number one-one-eight-seven-seven-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, approving the Murphy CSM development agreement for the design and installation of public improvements at thirty-four thirteen East Elm Road.
So this is a new lot that was created via CSM at thirty-four thirteen East Elm Road. There is a need to provide sanitary service to the property, and there is a connection manhole available on the south side of the street, which would be the connection point. Then they would extend that sanitary sewer approximately seventy-five feet to the property frontage and bring a sanitary sewer lateral off of that to the property. So that seventy-five feet of, of sanitary sewer would be considered public main, and that's why that is covered under a development agreement.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, motion?
I will make a motion to adopt resolution number one-one-eight-seven-seven, approving the Murphy CSM development agreement for the design and installation of public improvements at thirty-four thirteen East Elm Road. Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item twenty-six, consideration of resolution number one-one-eight-seven-eight-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to Always Contractors, Inc., project number one-five-zero-one-five.
So the project was constructed primarily in 2016. There was some punch list work that was taken care of this, this past construction season, and that was cleaning up some grading, grass restoration items. There was some cracked concrete that they had to replace. But the project is completed. It was another phase of the Aben Schine Park development. It added a third pedestrian bridge over the Oak Creek. It also added about two-thirds of a mile of additional paved pathway. Also not part of this contract, but part of the overall project, there was a nice winding mulch pathway that was put in, and that was actually by the parks crew that did that. So it's, it's a nice project. And the contractor did a decent job for us. The only thing that I would say is that, you know, we were over the awarded amount. Now, it was a unit price contract, so you paid on quantities, but we found a need to go over on some excavation and some stone subbase for the asphalt pathway along its east-west stretch along the south, as it hugged the south border of the park. So that accounted for the bulk of our overage. And we did have to put together a kind of a quick design and installation of a boardwalk over a segment of wetland that we just could not avoid due to its proximity to a property line. But, so we were about fourteen-point-nine percent over the awarded amount. So of a three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar contract, we will be about forty-seven thousand dollars over that.
Right. Dave?
Mike, thanks for talking about the, the, I think we had tire tracks that needed to be fixed and the concrete that was reported. Thanks for fixing that. I just want to let you know that I've been on that path a number of times, and I think it's fantastic. I mean, it's, it's a good bike ride. It's a nice walking distance. And I think it's, it's generated so much interest already in that we've had emails asking about whether or not that path is going to be plowed in the wintertime. And Ted's already responded to that, that residence request about that. So it's, it's quite busy. And I just make note that when this was developed, the path was talked about. The neighbors to the south were a little concerned that it was going to be so close to their property line. So engineering sat down with the residents and they came up with a, a, a design to move it a little way from their, their property line to the satisfaction of the residents. So that was, that was nice. So it's, it's a beautiful path back there, and I should take a, take a ride back there.
Right. Anything else?
That, Mike, does that get transferred from park impact fees directly to CIP? Not happy with me, though.
Seeing no further discussion, motion?
Kirkowski, make a motion, approving resolution number one-one-eight-seven-eight-dash-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to Always Contractors, Inc. Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Item twenty-seven, consideration of resolution number one-one-eight-eight-seven-nine-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, resolution approving the amendment easement agreement between SSV Oak Creek Two LLC and the city of Oak Creek. Mike?
Melissa, you want to take those or I can? But basically, there is a, on that property, there is an existing storm sewer. I didn't let you answer.
It's under engineering, Mike, so you had to tee it up. Thanks. This is, just as outlined in the council report, the bottom line is, back in August, the Plan Commission approved the site and building plans for this development at two-seven-five East Drexel Avenue with certain conditions. This amended easement agreement, which has been, been signed by the developer, and we now have the original hand-delivered here tonight by their council, essentially will privatize the existing public storm sewer and drainage easement is amended to a private easement. The original easement, which is an appended exhibit to this agreement, was entered into in nineteen-seventy. It runs along the north-south direction on the east boundary of the parcel. So to comply with the landscaping requirements, we needed to transfer this easement to private control of the developer. The city will save a bit of money in annual maintenance regarding this storm sewer and drainage area.
Questions from Melissa or Mike? Motion?
Kirkowski, make a motion to adopt resolution number one-one-eight-seven-nine-dash-one-one-zero-seven-one-seven, a resolution approving an amended easement agreement between SSV Oak Creek Two LLC and the city of Oak Creek. Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye. If I could direct your attention back to item twenty, we'll now go back to the vendor's summary report. Direct your questions to Melissa. She's the lady in the red. Questions, comments? Questions, comments?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just to note, the $1,350 of this, $1,007 and changes directly related to the project at Lake Vista Park, so significant progress, significant payments, unfortunately.
Well put. Well put. Anything else? No, seeing none? Motion?
We'll move to approve the vendor's summary report in the amount of $1,744,039.52.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Gets us to the license committee. I will now turn it over to Alderman Kerkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. The license committee did not meet prior to the council meeting. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 28, Kerkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 10 individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received. Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Excellent. That gets us up to adjournment. Just before we adjourn, I'd like to remind everybody, Saturday is Veterans Day. We will be having our annual celebration at Station 3. Our fire chief and fire staff is kind enough to let us use their facilities. Catherine, it kicks off at-
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM. So, please, if you can, please attend if possible. If nothing else, thank a veteran that day for your freedom. With that, motion to adjourn.
Kerkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Like to thank you all for tuning in or streaming us live. Again, please get out there, discover and celebrate Oak Creek, and I hope to see you on Veterans Day, Saturday, November 11th, at Station 3. Thank you.